Twenty twenty-five, I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to inform the public about the location of the Openshooting Act posted in the council chambers and accessible to members of the public. At this time, we'd ask for a moment of silence, followed immediately by the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
...........................................................................
Roll call, please.
Grantquist, Arns.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Beckman.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Mayor.
Here. All right. You need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Your Honor, I'll be abstaining from the consent.
Okay.
Second.
A motion, second, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, Arns, Jensen, Langy, Webb, Hildebrand, Beckman abstaining, McCarthy, motion carries.
All right, you can make it a motion to approve the full agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
That brings us to our regular agenda, item number twenty-seven, consideration approval on agreement between the city of Norfolk and the Norfolk Public Schools for a school resource officer, Chief Ty will be talking on that tonight. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion, second. All right, thank you.
Mayor, council members, thank you. I'm pleased to highlight this positive development regarding our school resource program. This agreement builds upon a successful partnership with Norfolk Public Schools spanning over twenty years, now expanding from two to three school resource officers. With this addition, we'll have one officer each at the high school, the junior high, and at the middle school. This collaboration allows us to place certified law enforcement officers directly into our schools, promoting safety, mentorship, and trust-building with students. By establishing these relationships early, we foster an environment of confidence and cooperation that is invaluable during any potential investigation or interviews down the road. Additionally, this enhanced partnership coincides with our recent departmental growth. We've added four certified officers since last fall, and we're excited that four more officers are set to graduate from the academy on August fourteenth. We appreciate the school district's support in sharing fifty percent of the officer's total compensation, reinforcing a strong community partnership. We will continue to prioritize safety and positively impact the youth in Norfolk. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Any discussion from the public? Any further discussion from council? Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Right, we're on to item number twenty-eight, consideration of approval to sell a dump truck to the village of Wausau for thirty-five thousand, contingent upon the arrival of a new replacement truck.
All over consideration of the approval to sell a dump truck?
Second.
All right, Lyle.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Lyle, let operations manager for the city of Norfolk, got the opportunity today to come up and tell you briefly, very quickly, about our surplus equipment and how we sometimes get rid of it. This is unique because it's in excess of thirty thousand dollars. In accordance with city code, anything over thirty thousand dollars reads as follows: "All sales of equipment or supplies of thirty thousand dollars or more shall, in value shall, require approval of council, mayor and council." A lot of the equipment that we go through is considerably less than that. However, this is a good lesson in communication and everybody, not just in the community, but throughout northeast Nebraska, working together. Probably a year ago or so, Councilman Arns had contact with somebody in, from Wausau, that, a community that's looking for a dump truck. One thing leads to another, they contact us. We have this, this extra truck that's coming, that's due to be replaced in a couple of months or so, month or two, was ordered last year. Some lag time on some of the orders from equipment from, over the years, since COVID, but once that new truck comes in, we can divest ourselves with, from this dump truck to Wausau. A lot of the surrounding communities have lots of employees that come and work in the community, so if we can keep, help their costs stay down. We've also done something of similar nature with a fire truck to hater, a dump truck to pilgrim. I think the word's getting out because Woodland Park has also asked. So, that's, that's the good part about this. The other thing, if you're wondering, stuff that doesn't necessarily make the thirty thousand dollars a greater, we put a lot of stuff on what's called GOV deals, GOV deals for surplus equipment and vehicles. Sometimes folks from the community will call and ask what happened, where that goes to. This is a good opportunity for those listening at home can tune into that. I looked up today quickly, the, this, this, since twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, May of twenty twenty-one, through GOV deals, we've sold the bulk of the equipment to Iowa, Nebraska, South Dakota, and Kansas, but it also includes South Carolina, North Carolina, Washington, Missouri, Colorado, Michigan, Tennessee, Florida, Ohio, Illinois, California, and Fairbanks, Alaska. People will come by stuff from, from there. So that's the, the down and dirty version of the surplus equipment for the city of Norfolk. Does anybody have any questions?
Lyle, when is the new truck expected to be here?
So, I think it was ordered last fall, and this one, we hope to have probably, I think, Will threw something in the back of my head, but end of, end of August, the first part of September?
October first.
October. So, put a delivery correction factor on that, probably the end of October. But hopefully before the snow flies. And what we have planned is, so the vis, the village of Wausau has also had this conversation as well, purchase amount of thirty-five thousand dollars in this circumstance, which is, is interesting, because in CIP, we had it depicted as ten thousand dollars. We didn't, as we're looking at that years in advance, the way the market's falling into place, the, the quality of equipment that Fleet Division, Street Division takes care of stuff, this is a great opportunity for surrounding communities to come and be able to look at the equipment that they have, see all the maintenance records that we have. We can say, yeah, this is a good piece of equipment for your community, it'll serve you all well, or maybe it's a, it's not so good, it needs to go on down the road somewhere else. So, this is a, a really good program for the whole region. Other questions?
I don't have any questions, just a comment. I just want to thank Lyle and Will for coordinating this, this particular transaction, and I think future forward, a lot of communities around Norfolk may be able to benefit from some of our surplus that we may have, or, I should say, salvage or resale. I just think it's a good program, and it's nice to kind of keep, keep it local if we can, so.
Yep, I agree, that's, that's noted, and like I said, I'm just delivering the message here, you can give most of the credit to Will and the maintenance crews there to take care of that stuff and keep it up and functioning, and get the Scott Smith that gets this stuff sold when the time comes and creates a little bit of revenue from what's there from the surplus sales, but appreciate it, Councilman. Others? All right, thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, Lyle. Any other discussion? The council, anybody from, members from the public tonight have any questions? All right, seeing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, that moves us on to item number twenty-nine, consideration of ordinance number fifty-nine thirty-three amending section two dash nineteen-one and two dash nineteen-two of the city code to provide for the public comment period at the city, first city council's meeting of each month, taking effect at the first city council meeting in September. Ordinance number fifty-nine thirty-three passed on first reading as amended at the July twenty-first, twenty twenty-five city council meeting.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance fifty-nine thirty-three on second reading.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, so we'll enter some discussion, and Kylie, you'll be leading us on this.
Yep. So, the ordinance that is attached in this agenda packet is the amended ordinance that was passed on first reading, which includes a monthly public comment period and a five-minute time limit when speaking at both public comment period and on each agenda item.
So, from the last time we were here, I had, I had two or three phone calls that wanted to know why, why three minutes, twelve times a year was not sufficient, and their request was that they would like to see it remain to three minutes on public comment period. There's a couple of reasons, but five minutes on the, on a regular agenda item is that if there, if, if somebody is here and they have a, they have an agenda item and we're talking about moving this to the beginning of the meeting, is that still correct? They wanted to know why, if there was, if there was ten people to talk or five people to talk, why they have to wait twenty-five minutes longer to get to their agenda where they could have waited, where they could have waited fifteen and got that out. So, there was some conversation that I had, I had had this week with, with others that asked if, if possibly we could take that back down to consideration of an amendment, and I told them it'd be amended if, if we went this route, but I'm asking for also some input from other council and maybe public, but moving it back down to the three minute on open comment period, since we're going to twelve months a year, twelve, or twelve times a year, and keeping, keeping agenda items at five for the consideration of people that are actually on the agenda item. One other comment that was made was, three minutes should be sufficient because you guys don't, that's our time to speak as a public and it's not, and, and you guys don't interfere with that timeframe by asking questions primarily, so. I just wanted to tell you guys what I had, what I had heard this week, or this last week, with some feedback from, from the conversation we had on, on this agenda item.
Yeah, I was, I was gone from the last, the last meeting where we had this vote. I was one of the councilmen in the previous couple of years, been pushing for more public comment periods, and so I'm really happy that we have, we now have twelve per year. I know not everyone was supportive of this, so I thought three minutes was a good compromise for the, the time period for them to speak. I agree, I'm, I'm good with five minutes on, you know, the other items, but, you know, we can, I think, I watched the last meeting, Sue said, you know, there's email, there's phone calls for longer conversations or longer items. You know, we're here to conduct business for the city. I think you're right, Corey, there's, you know, there are opportunities to speak with us and to speak with the city. I think three minutes was good, it was a good time period, good timeframe with the twelve minute, twelve meetings, but, you know, again, we're here to conduct business for the city. I know having certain people wait till the end of the meeting, or have they have agenda items towards, you know, the bottom of the agenda, they're gonna be waiting longer. But I think three minutes with twelve meetings was a good compromise and a good, to try to find a good balance. So, I'm, I'm not gonna argue over three to five, I would just want to get my comments out there, that I was really supportive of having more meetings, and I was, I was okay with three minutes, I thought it was a good compromise, so. Any, any motion today, I guess, changing it to three minutes is, is fine with me, I was just, I don't want to make a big deal about it, but I, I think the twelve meetings is a, is a really good compromise, so.
I also had a lot of calls and emails and, and texts and people stopping me when I'm out in public, thanking me for letting this council go back to the five minutes. They're appreciative because they're the citizens, they are part of the, the public business, and so giving them that extra two minutes is not a stretch by any long shot, in my opinion. I, I'm supportive of the five minutes and keeping it the way we have amended.
I have no problem with five, I was just, I thought three was a good compromise to the twelve meetings from, from four, so, you know, a lot, many more meetings or a lot more comment period time.
And I, and I don't, I'm not taking a stance at this moment either, I'm just telling you, from my conversation, what I had heard over the, over the last two weeks.
And I can kind of try to further explain, so last, last meeting we're at, I actually was a no vote on this. It wasn't because I didn't appreciate the public comment. I'm in favor of the three, three minutes for the non-agenda items and five for agenda items. I guess, without public inter, or without interaction with the public, I thought three minutes was, was a lot of time, plenty of time to present that situation, so I thought three minutes seemed right to me. I thought five, kind of going back to Corey's point, I'm, I'm, was a little concerned if, if there's, you know, four or five people making five-minute comments, I think they could probably do them in three minutes, and that would knock off ten to, you know, ten minutes or whatever it may be for that agenda, for the agenda items to start. So, if people are in the crowd, I, I, and they came for a specific reason, I hate to delay that meeting when I think three minutes probably can get their point across. That was just my thought, my reasoning, and that's why I voted no. It wasn't because I don't want someone to come up and talk, I just thought three minutes maybe was enough.
Do you think, I'm, I'm listening to you guys, but I mean, we, we haven't even tried this yet, do we need to give it a go and see, you know, just give it a go and?
I don't really have a problem.
If five minutes is, you know, becomes three hours, you know, then maybe it's time to look, relook at it, but as of right now, we kind of already did this.
I don't, I don't disagree, and I'm not.
I support giving it a chance.
I'm not gonna stand on this and say.
I know this, I know this took, this took a long time to get to here, so I don't want to blow this up.
And it doesn't mean that they're gonna use the whole five minutes, I mean, that's a part of it.
True, true. And like I said, I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, I just think if this does happen to get, then we can take another look at it. Well, I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to five minutes either, I just initially thought three was more appropriate.
Maybe you can answer this, or, but I thought in the last meeting, we talked about, if we have a, a big crowd here for public comment, there is the ability to set the timeframe at that meeting, correct? No, you can't.
My understanding is, once it's given, you can't take it, you can't rescind it.
No, I mean, couldn't, you can't set, like, okay, tonight, we're packed house, we're gonna have to ask for three minutes tonight, or we have to stay automatically with the five.
You can give more, you can't give less.
Okay, all right, all right, I didn't know, all right, thank you.
What if we changed the terminology to up to five minutes?
Would that only make a difference with?
The five minutes versus?
Well, I just think, I, I'm, I'm not really for any timeframe. I think the mayor should run the meeting. If he sees a houseful of people here and he needs to try to get everyone in front of the mic to talk, I think he should have the flexibility to give them that, everyone a chance to talk. That's what I think, so I.
Say we're not talking.
Yeah, I just feel like the mayor should have the flexibility to run the meeting, so if we put the verbiage in there, up to, does it give the mayor or the officer who'd run the meeting the flexibility to run it?
Okay, a little less.
And I would think citizens in the room, understanding the, say, there's a room full of people, there's a hot topic, that if the officer of the meeting says, hey, just to get everyone up here and not be here for six hours today, let's cut it to three minutes, two minutes, four minutes.
I think the only problem you have is you never know who's gonna be running your meeting. You know, I'm, I'm mayor now, I might not, I'm, you know, you get new mayors, you get new elected officials, that's why they're set, you want to set a timeframe.
I would say just the cleanest way would be to have a minimum set and be clear that that's the minimum, and you're not getting wonky with the language.
All right, I'm sure we're gonna have some discussion from the crowd, or the, the people here tonight, so feel free to come forward and now, if you would like to speak on this.
Jim McKenzie, my recommendation would be to leave the public comment period at five minutes. If you think it's gonna be an issue in front of the meeting, leave it at the end of the meeting, I'm fine with that. If you don't want to delay, I, actually, I would probably recommend leaving it at the end of the meeting, because you may have people who are here for specific agenda items, and they don't want to wait through the public comment period, so just leave it at the end. Leave it at five minutes. If it becomes a problem, you can always adjust it down the road. I think five, three, to me, is too short. If you want to talk about an issue and, and present some data behind the issue, three minutes is way too short. I mean, I've, I've listened to people talk on agenda items for five minutes and not really present a lot of information that may be required if it's a new item that you're, you haven't talked about before, so. I'd leave it at the end, I'd keep it at five minutes, if it becomes a problem, you can adjust it, and, and I would disagree that you cannot adjust it on the fly. I mean, two dash nineteen dot one, letter D, says, "The presiding officer shall from time to time make such rules as he may deem necessary to fulfill and carry out the intent of the provisions of this section." My interpretation of that is you can make those rules on the fly, so if you've got twenty people that want to talk, you can say, you know what, we've got too many people here, so you cut it to three minutes, but normally, you're gonna have a couple people, you know, they're gonna talk, give them five minutes if they need it, I think that's fair. That's what I would recommend. Thank you.
Well, I think Jim brings up a good point there. I, if this is in the back of the meeting, the, the five minutes probably is a little more acceptable with the timeframe, just because then we're not, we're not making the rest of the citizens wait for that meeting to get started, or their agenda item to get started. That was one of my biggest concerns, is having someone waiting for, if you will, the regular meeting to start, so. I don't know, I would probably be in favor with.
I, I was one, I was one pushing for this, I was the one pushing for the start of the meeting, and that was just because it would be nice, if people got things to say, they come in, get it off their chest, and then they can leave, and then we can start, you can get your meeting going again, you know, so people had a, and then they're not waiting, so it's like, you've got a group of people waiting either way. You just gotta pick if you want, the people that have, want to talk to your public comment can wait through the meeting, or if the people that have stuff on the agenda want to wait for public comment. So, it was just more of a, I thought it was more favorable when you had a, more of a, maybe a controversial topic, that they'd be able to get that off, get, about they want to, would have said what they wanted to say, and, and not have to stick around for the entire meeting, because some people just don't have that much, you know, they may not have the time to do that, so.
Ending the agenda, can, can we, can we see, can we put it in where it sees fit at the beginning or the end?
I think that's.
And go back and forth?
I'm, I'm, I'm fine either way, I'm not gonna get, I'm not gonna get upset about whatever you got, you know, you guys have to sit up here, you sit up here through these meetings with us all, so, if you guys want it at the end of the meeting, we'll have it at the end of the meeting. I'm, it was just, that's the reasoning why I thought it'd be good at the start of the meeting, so.
I have to agree with you, Shane, I think that would be a good idea, because there's people that wait here, just like the gentleman that talked about the four-wheelers or whatever, and that was his only, only reason to be here, and he was up here, what, three minutes?
And the ordinance doesn't specify whether it needs to be held at the beginning or the end of the meeting, so that can be adjusted.
Okay. Well, if that can be adjusted, then, you know, play it by ear, yeah. All right, so where are we at now? We had the.
Doug.
Okay.
The main thing is, the takeaway from this is that we all want to do the right thing, whatever we think that is individually, so. No one's up here trying to do the wrong thing.
Well, this has been, I know, I know, I guess the citizens had a lot of patience with us on this to make a decision, but it was, there was a lot of considerable different opinions on this, and we, we went back and forth and back and forth, I think, for quite a while, and we've landed here, so, I think that's good cooperation, and people will, you know, there were some people that got, had to get moved one way or the other, so I feel like the cooperation was there, and that's a good sign, so, but, you know, we'll play it by ear. All right, any other comment? I haven't, anybody else want to come up and say anything? Any other discussion here? All right. A short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section two dash nineteen point one of the official city code to provide for a public comment period at the first city council meeting of each month, to amend section two dash nineteen point two to clarify that the procedure for addressing the council applies both during a public comment period or while discussing an agenda item, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-nine thirty-three carries on second reading.
To put this behind us, are we able to suspend the rules on third reading? I make a motion to suspend the rules on third reading?
Second.
Give a motion to second. There's no discussion on third reading, so please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-nine thirty-three carries on third reading.
Okay. On to item number thirty, consideration of ordinance number fifty-nine thirty-four amended section four dash seven of the code to update animal rabies vaccination requirements.
Move consideration of ordinance number fifty-nine thirty-four.
Second. Sorry, Mel will be leading the discussion here.
Yes, I will. So, this is more of a housekeeping item. Our office received a request to update code section four dash seven to change the requirement that animals be vaccinated against rabies every two years, to instead state that they, that the rabies vaccinations are to be in accordance with vaccination manufacturer recommendations.
Yep, and that's because my understanding of it is that some of these vaccinations have one, two, or three-year recommendations, so it doesn't make sense to put the two-year in when that may not apply to all of them. After discussions with Police Chief Ty, however, it was noted that there was a more comprehensive update needed to this section, and so it was drafted just to better align with current state laws. The updated ordinance requires vaccinations at intervals based on the vaccine manufacturers' recommendations and references the rules and regulations that come from the Nebraska Department of Agriculture and then Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services, so just, just a housekeeping item.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion from members of the public? Short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section four dash seven of the official city code to update animal rabies vaccination requirements, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-nine thirty-four carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I'd move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance fifty-nine thirty-four on second and third reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second, discussion, please. Any discussion from the members of the audience? Nope, I don't see any, so, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-nine thirty-four carries on second and third.
All right, we're on to item number thirty-one, consideration approval of improving an increase to define amount for exceeding daily BOD, TSS, and TKN discharge levels, and define a sludge discharge load specific to the interim significant industrial user agreement for water discharge with Access Nutrition, formerly Milk Specialties Company, Milk Specialties Global, which was effective August, or October eighth of twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Right, motion to second. Steve will be leading this discussion.
Sure, thank you, Council. Mayor, in front of you is an amended permit for Milk Specialties. As discussed there by the mayor, this permit does specifically two things. It increases the daily penalty for exceed, permanent, permanent exceedance of BOD, TSS, and TKN from one thousand dollars per day to twenty thousand dollars per day. It also inserts language in the permit to help define what a slug discharge lit, lit, slug discharge load is for this permit, and then it's defining that as eight, eight and a half percent are exceeding the, the loading limits by more than eight and a half percent of the limit. For background information there, the permit was put in place last, early last October. Since then, we have had two hundred and eighty-four permit violations, approximately one-third of those BOD exceedance, and two-thirds of those TSS exceedance. The loading can be, depending on just how, how much it exceeds those, the permanent limit, beginning back in October, the permanent limit was set at eight thousand pounds a day of BOD, and a, a small exceedance is manageable by the plant, but large exceedances, especially large exceedance multiple days in a row, is very difficult on the plant. Most recently, here in early July, beginning on July ninth, we had about ten days in a row of exceedances above ten thousand pounds. We had highs of fifteen thousand pounds, a couple loads in there of, in exceeding twelve thousand pounds a day. Our plant is still in the process of recovery from those excessive loads during that ten, eleven-day period. So, we feel that we've, you know, we've, we've. that we've, you know, we've, we've worked with them substantially here now for almost a year, under a new permit, you know, based on the number of exceedances. The thousand dollar a day penalty is, is not, does not appear to be excessive enough, or punitive enough to keep them within their permit. So, we are recommending a fairly substantial increase in that daily penalty for each of those loadings, so that we are better able to keep them within their, their permit. Any questions?
Steve, I have, I have a question. So, over the last week, I've had a lot of, a lot of family from out of town come in. Will, will this help with the odor on Omaha Avenue?
Potentially, yes. I would say that in order for them to, it's gonna require some, most likely require some changes in operation for them, just in terms of how they're processing and, and handling that. Over the last year, they have, actually, over the last six or seven months now, they've, they've invested quite a bit in some pre-treatment process up there, some loading control. I believe they have the ability to manage that load, and if done so, those odors would be, I, I think substantially reduced. So, I do think this will help with that, you know, that odor issue by giving them the incentive to manage that plant appropriately.
At what point will the, at what point will the twenty thousand dollar fine kick in at?
It's, it's effective tomorrow.
I, I mean, what's the, so it's eight thousand, right? Anything over eight thousand, or is it anything over nine thousand, or what's the load limit?
The way, the way it's written is it would be anything over, we've also pulled them back via a letter that went, went out to them recently. We've pulled them back to eight thousand. We had increased them to nine thousand on effective July twelfth. As a function of the multiple days in a row of overloading, we have pulled them back per the permit to eight thousand pounds. In, in theory, yes, once, if they were to go over by, by one pound, in, in theory, that would, that would pull the trigger on that load. I, I, I would say, you know, that, that's difficult sometimes. I would be open to maybe some conversation that would allow them a five percent over, overage, that permit level before that would kick in.
That's all, it's eight thousand and one could trigger a twenty thousand dollar fine.
That's correct.
Okay.
Is there any plans to accommodate their business and our citizens who are suffering with the smell? It's not just Omaha Avenue, it's a lot of South Norfolk.
There, there is, and that's, and that's a very good question. I appreciate the question, Councilman. There is. So, we, we've been working with them. The way the permit was structured originally, and we actually started negotiating this, or, or working on the language of the permit with them back in January of twenty-twenty-four. And there is, within there, there's a conversation. This is, again, it's an interim permit, this is an amendment to the interim permit. It's structured as an interim permit, so that we can get to a point in a preliminary engineering design contract that we're currently working on, to understand what we need to do, either as a function of industrial pre-treatment or some plant expansion, to take the load from them, so that we can eliminate those odors at their plant, and by giving us a little bit more capacity at our plant. We've been working with Olson. On July twenty-fourth, Olson presented a plan to both, we invited Milk Specialties or Actus, they are now called Actus Nutrition. We invited Actus to come in, we invited Highland Roberts to come in, Olson was here, there were other, other members of the community and, and members of, of the dairy industry that were present at that meeting, and we talked about a plan. Olson presented two options for plant expansion and industrial pre-treatment. It would take about three years to, to get that in place, but once that's in place, essentially would allow them to distribute directly to us a hundred percent of the effluent for treatment. And there would still be some processes, I, I think, that would need to be looked at in terms of some odor, potential odor control there at the plant, but, yes, we are working with them, you know, to, to find both a short-term solution and a long-term solution. Most recently, I think Friday, I had a short conversation with their West Coast Operations Manager, Zoran Zerbek, and we were talking about a membrane treatment facility. These are, they can be permanent, but they also make them temporary. They build them off-site, roll them in. That might be something we can get in place in six, eight, nine months. They would both, A, allow them to operate at more of a full capacity, but also deal with some of the odor issue and just general treatment capacity that, that they're desiring.
Any other discussion? I see there's some, come on up.
Mr. Mayor, Council?
Just go ahead and state your name and sign in.
Zoran Zerbeck, VP Operations for West Coast.
Desmond Fielding, Plant Engineer for the Norfolk location.
So, first and foremost, I wanted to thank everybody, and I understand the smell comes to the city. Mr. Mayor, you were at the site on that day, you spent quite a bit of time, spent a couple hours there. Did you smell anything that was traveling out of that side? It doesn't always happen, it happens when the wind shifts through. But we did, on the end of the day, allowed to put a million gallon wastewater tank on a property, and that's always-
He's Zoran, if you wanna, yeah.
It's always gonna be just what it is. It's a wastewater tank. It's gonna smell. It comes from a dairy. You know, all of you drive from here to Omaha, and you go through several feedlots. Does it smell? Yeah, that's where your steaks come from. It does. We, we process the milk. It's gonna have a certain amount of odor in that tank. At that point, whatever we do with the wastewater treatment plant, it will help discharge to the city. I doubt it will say, change the smell unless we bypass that tank and go directly to the city, and we talked about that as well. I do understand we gotta get our stuff better in control, and believe me, since I got there, we've been working on it. I spent over five million dollars worth of capital in it, and we continue. I got a group studying right now that's gonna come out to the side, and we, we proposing a full treatment plant on our side to discharge clean water to the city completely. Our biggest thing right now, currently, we don't have enough power. That's coming, and I don't know if you maybe can talk about it, but there's just not enough power on a side to power all the equipment they're proposing to put on there. So, it's probably gonna have to be somewhere between two years while we put another power station out there to be able to power up all the equipment blowers and everything else we need to put on there. But in the meantime, you know, I gotta be able to run the business, and gotta be able to get the revenue, and twenty thousand dollars is for each violation. It can happen like this. Something that, we are trying to control as best way possible, but sometimes it does happen where we have power outages, water from a city stops flowing, the equipment just faults, and there's not a whole lot I can do about that. It's the only way, one way to go, it's down the drain, and we have a, a lot of storms here. We had a lightning hit our building, we lost all the controls. It's gonna happen, but I just can't keep afford to pay, that thing will shut us down, guys. You guys, there's hundred and forty paying jobs, three million dollars worth a month that we spend on local businesses around here. That will get us out of this city. We can't afford to pay that much. And I know we can't afford to keep going the same way. I, I fully understand you guys as well, but can we find a middle way? We wanna work on this, I just can't get, put against the wall and be like, you know, it's gonna be sixty thousand dollars a day, or if we violate on all three of them. And when you violate on one, you've probably violated on all three of them, right? So, it's more like sixty thousand dollars, not really twenty thousand dollars. And-
What has your communication been with our wastewater treatment plant to, to say, hey, we had an accidental release?
We send an email out every day with the flow that we send, what happened, and if we're having an issue, we also communicate that via email as well.
But, as, as it has happened, have you given-
It's gotten better in-
A heads up that, hey, we had a problem?
It's not as much-
Instead of being proactive, instead of reactive after a release?
Let me explain how it works. So, if we do have a critical spill, we do have a high calamity tank on site with Realtek sensors, I think, you, I was able to show you when you were on site. So, it will detect that, and it will put that in a high-strength waste silo. So, nothing will actually go into the EQ tank. But what it is, is to our process, there's a certain amount of loading that goes in, and the way the wind and the weather works, sometimes the tank will turn, and we will get different readings. I could be treating for three days, super great, I'm super excited, I'm at seven thousand, I come in the next day, I'm, and I'm about thirty-two hundred, so I'm running about nine thousand. I can't, and I have the same amount of flow each day. I can't just tell the farmer, stop milking, thank cows for another little less today. I get that, but that, that's not how it works in the milk world. He can't just suddenly deliver me less milk. So, I gotta be able to work through that. And that's where you see some of the variations, where it goes seven, 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 eight, nine, ten. It just happens where, it wasn't necessarily that we have an offset, it's just that everything, the way the CIPs fell, the way everything washed, and the way the tank turned, ended up being a little higher. We gotta be able to work in a little bit of variation, because we're not, it's not a science where I can just tell I'm gonna discharge six thousand every day. That's never gonna happen. It doesn't work that way. Now, can I get closer and better? Absolutely. And I, I think we've been trying to work in a best way, but every time I seem, I make two steps forward, we 'd have a big storm, we lose power, everything dumps down to ground, that, that wiped me out for three days, right there. I gotta recover for three days, and I guess, till milk keeps coming. Nebraska does not have enough infrastructure where I can just say, I come from Idaho, and just alone in my town, we have eleven milk plants. So, if I'm down, I just call the other guys up and say, take the remaining milk, we're gonna figure it out throughout the week. Well, let's help each other. Great. This doesn't exist here. There's nobody else that can take that amount of milk. So, coal from the Nebraska Milk Association goes to us, that's it. Doesn't really go anywhere else. And the drivers that pick it up does not have the ability to take it out of state. Every now and then we can find a little bit of, we can get a load or two here, but on the end of the day, it has to come through our plant. So, we gotta figure out how to do that as well. And a lot of things that came in were, since I've been there, I can't speak from, before my, before I got there, but everything that, since I've been there, a lot of it's just been storms, power outages, not enough water to the DAF, where our polymer wasn't working, things like that, that caused some of these things. Not because we were careless or were dumping stuff down the ground. Doesn't, doesn't work that way. And city council wants to come over and have a walkthrough, I'm more than happy to facilitate that, so you guys can actually see it before you walk in something. But the plant operates, I've employed a hundred and fifty people that count on the paycheck. I can't afford to pay them fines twenty thousand dollars each year till we figure this out. I know we gotta figure it out, and I'm committed to it. I'm getting ready to spend, what, five and a half million dollars right now with World Water Works, but I need time. If I known this, if I would have started this project, we wouldn't have been in this mess, but I didn't. I came into halfway through it, and I gotta fix it. I also gotta operate. Some of you own your own businesses, you know, you know, if revenue doesn't come in, it's hard to invest money. It's hard for me to put five million dollars if I'm not having revenue coming in, right? And if I have to slow down or not bring enough revenue in, it's gonna hurt that progress as well. Any questions I can answer?
So, do you have, so do you have backup generation? You've, you've referred to losing power. Do you have backup generation-
We don't have a backup generator.
That stops, that starts instantaneously?
We don't have the size of them.
For a critical?
No.
With the amount of power that our plant runs, it's, it's just not feasible for that kind of generation, so.
We take a lot of power. It would, it would take probably several semi-trucks, more to diesel trucks, sitting out there to be able to power, to provide enough power to be effective.
We have backup generation for some critical processes, your emergency lighting, it keeps our network switches and those things running, but it's not enough to power, you know, a hundred and fifty horsepower motors, those kind of things. That's gonna shut down.
Take a lot of kilowatts. We looked into something like that, but it's just not feasible, is how much power we pull at the moment. Anybody else?
I appreciate your efforts and your comments. If the city had, you know, a two- or three-day notice of a larger amount, would that help, Steve, at all? Or, does that matter at all?
It, it does, Councilman. City code actually requires it. If there's, if there's an anomaly at the plant, city code requires immediate contact by the plant to the city staff. We really struggle getting that immediate contact when there's something going on at the plant. Yes, most recently, as a function of, of communication with Zoran and his team and, and David Lenzmeyer, we are, we do have daily emails coming that tell us what's gonna be in operation at the plant, what yesterday's loading results, what their test results were, what they were flowing. What's, what's missing, it may be getting better, but it's really that, that immediate contact. You know, they're, up until now, they've had a, on July twelfth, they went from eight thousand pounds a day to nine thousand pounds a day. I sent an email on July seventh indicating that on July twelfth, we would move their permit to nine thousand pounds. Beginning July ninth, they hit, they, they sent twelve thousand one twenty, followed by ten thousand five eighty, followed by ten, followed by fifteen thousand, followed by twelve six, and so on. Those, those anomalies, you know, some, something's going on there at the plant to, to kick them that far over their, their permit. And I think on July twelfth, one of those days, there was some contact about some equipment failure. Our plant, just like they're an industry that takes dairy and processes dairy, we're a wastewater plant. They are one-third of our flow and about one-third of our plant's treatment capacity. And there's some twenty-five percent to a, to a third, depending on their BOD loading. And when they have those kinds of fluctuations, we, we have to change what's moving through our plant, the various, the various sequences that are going on in our plant, how much air we're pumping through the, through the wastewater stream that's coming in. So, we have to adjust that, and if, if we can't respond immediately to a fluctuation in that flow and that loading, it has the potential to damage the plant, it damages the organisms that are treating the sewage. When that, when that occurs, our, it, it, it changes the effluent, the constituents within our effluent that's going to the river, and it has the potential to put us out of our permit. And so, it is, you know, I can only say it's, we're still recovering some three weeks later from that ten-day series of hits. So, it's very real. And if that was to continue, you know, our, our plant's capacity just continues to decline. So, there, there does need to be, that, that penalty fee needs to incentivize permit compliance. I, I think there's some language we can do there to work with them. We wanna work with them, but we just need to find something that works for, for both parties.
Just, just to explain a little bit about the violations during that time, we test on our own, and we do also third-party testing to the Midwest lab. Our numbers don't quite match as high as Steve reported. I'm not saying you guys are wrong, or we are, or we are right, but that also goes to a point where we didn't think we were, at that point, that we'd be that high. We have the, actually, all the data to prove that. As far as the third-party testing goes as well, we were thinking we were still into the high nine on several days, we guys. And I'm not saying we were right, by any means.
I guess the comment I would make, and just speaking from an engineering perspective, just dealing numbers and facts, that's kind of my preference. I've been a part of forty million dollar wastewater expansion in the city of Blair, done a multimillion expansion in Omaha, so I'm familiar with wastewater before coming here. And to, to Zoran's point, you know, what we're proposing here is to limit the existing permit that we have, that's effective for another twelve months plus, changing those limits in that permit. Part of the issue with what is being proposed is, like you said, you know, we're one pound over. You know, we're sending our samples, the same samples the city's testing that we're testing, we're sending to a third-party lab, it's ISO seventeen twenty-five certified, which means it's certified as a, for calibration and testing. That's just the International Organization of Standardization, so it's international standards. And those third-party results in, in the month of July, based off of those results, the city is a thousand pounds- And those third party results in in the month of July, um based off of those results, the city is a thousand pounds high on average. Over the month of July. So we're talking about, that's that's over fourteen percent high versus what a third party lab is telling us we're at. So when we're talking about fines of twenty thousand a day, potentially sixty thousand if we're fined across three different categories. That's a pretty big margin of error. And so without having accurate data, it seems. That it's just difficult to impose that kind of fine based off of city data that is not agreeing with. Um, you know, a a ISO certified laboratory that has lower data.
Rob, why don't you come on up? So before Rob comes up here, so what I'm understanding is that we put these limitations on. On this to protect us from being. In, I remember I'll say trouble with 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 our permitting with the state and I don't know if the feds are involved or not, but. We have to do that to keep our plant in 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 check, so we don't oh go over what our permitting is. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So what kind of fine are we expecting if we? Get get a get a surplus of of these. BODs and solids and whatever not. What what are what are we expecting from the from the state of Nebraska or maybe maybe even on the federal side of things? For for fines on 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 our side of it?
I'll go one step further, Steve. What are we looking at if other industries are unable to use our facility because of this load? What liabilities do we have there?
There are certainly liabilities. I don't know what that that looks like legally if. You know, one industry takes us takes us down due to overloading, um and that has an impact on all the other industries in the community. I I don't know that answer, but I'm I'm sure there's, you know, I'm sure there's. I'm sure there's a liability there. In terms of what happens to us when we go over. Um, there would be an investigation and and there could be federal fines as well as state fines. Um, those could be as high as um. Thirty thousand a day um at the federal level for for permitting noncompliance.
But so far, we have not had any of those issues even though. Even when, before my time, when, as you were dealing with actives, they were sending you anywhere between thirty, thirty-five, forty. Thousand pounds a day. We cut that, we cut that way down. And we were talking between eighty five hundred and ninety five hundred. We're not talking slugging you guys with forty, fifty thousand. Haven't we done since I've been there? So we're way in a smaller range. I understand what you're going after, but we're weighing up, we're talking, we're here now. We used to be like right here. We used to have zero control at this side. It used to be a direct discharge.
We we wanna have, we're friendly to industry. That's that's our reputation. You ask anyone that runs industry in our community, we don't wanna be here.
Same.
We're we're looking at a bigger picture when we have.
If I was here from a star, we wouldn't be here.
We have citizens.
Wastewater treatment plant like.
We have citizens showing concern.
And this won't be a problem in sixteen months, I guarantee you that.
Yeah, so.
I'll have that fixed, but I within that timeframe, I can't be hit. I I can't financially sustain that.
We just feel like we're at a spot where we can't take it no more. Like the 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 community's had enough.
But I'm asking, I'm asking us to come somewhere in between. We're not violating by a huge amounts, guys. We're talking small amounts. If we can just figure out how to come in between and I can still run the plant and generate the revenue, I can invest that money in fixing it.
Rob, why don't you come up here and and tell it from city side?
First of all, let's talk about the the numbers not matching. So uh our facility is a credit EPA lab. We run double tests on everything. On our facility. We also have full chain of custody. They don't have chain of custody. They don't have a certified operator in their facility. Uh, so I mean, what they're setting off was if we've been preserved right, there's all these things to go with that. So that can be where some of the difference come. Now, we have had their lab tickets come over, run side by side with us, come up with the exact same numbers. So, um, and that was a request. So that that's kind of a little bit where there's a little bit of shady ground there, so.
But that's only recently started, not the dates that he's talking.
Right, but what we've done is always the way we've always done it. So that was just a one time date, but. Uh, and our numbers are getting closer because we there were some discrepancies on the thing. So we follow the um. Uh, the EPA has a standard methods book that we follow, which now we have, you guys have one. Uh, so we follow a criteria to get good numbers. Uh, so anyway, uh, there's that piece of it as well. You know, so. Obviously, we've been loaded at the plant. We've been loaded for a long time. My staff has put a lot of work into this. We put in a lot of hours. And it just keeps getting loaded. Uh, we have not had very good correspondence with them till just recently. We had a whole time when DAF was offline. The only reason I found out is because I made a phone call, said, hey, what's going on, guys? We got high numbers here. No communication with that. This makes it pretty hard for me to run a wastewater plant when we have, we're running on a razor's edge every day. We're trying to figure out what they're doing, what all the other industries are doing. Our biologicals, it just doesn't happen overnight, folks. This takes four to six weeks to grow those bugs. It's a roller coaster ride for us every day. Uh, we've stayed compliant. We've only had one out, but that's because my staff is. Busted their bus to make it happen. Alls we're asking is you guys get close to your limits. This is not sustainable. This roller coaster ride. In five days, even by your guys' numbers, I have your numbers right here, shows you have like five, six days that are high. No contact, we didn't back off, we just kept going at it.
We backed off every time we have an issue. It's just you can understand.
Then why do the numbers stay high, Zor?
There's the million gallon tank that's being processed. There's three days worth of water that's going through. It takes a while to get that. To stabilize that.
We can't just shut the milk off. It doesn't work.
As you fill it up though, as you know you're over, then you need to back off, so. And we do, we do, and then it gets better in three days. But i- if if that was the truth, it would kept continue to climb. But you can see in the numbers that as soon as we talk about it and it gets better, it's just the amount of time that it takes to react to that is not as.
You talk about your your dairy and having a place to go and all this stuff. We have the same situation going on. We're the shock absorber between industry.
I wasn't blaming anybody. Did I say you guys didn't?
As we don't wanna get into it, yeah.
I understand each each point and we wanna, we wanna get better. We wanna invest the money.
We've got, so so Zor, you said, you said something a minute ago. You said, I need sixteen months. So what did you mean by that?
It'll take us about sixteen months to put a full size wastewater plant.
Okay, and then I also heard our our staff, our staff has said to us, when you do have an issue there, it takes about thirty minutes. To get from your plant to to our facility, and it takes about three hours to run through our facility. So we've got about three hours and thirty-five minutes of time from when you have an episode to when they need to know. And and I thought you guys have talked about dedicating one individual. And I and I did, I did get a chance to to tour your plant. I did take, went out there and toured the plant. I will say, uh, if you get a chance to go out there, do. It's 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 an impressive facility. They've, they have invested the money in, and you can tell. They put five million into it. You can tell that they. Cause their DAF system, I went and looked at the DAF system and I and uh saw how they're testing and all this stuff, so. Seems like we've gotta get on the same page on what the BOD levels are obviously. So we, if we're reading twelve and you're reading nine. Somehow or another, we'd in the next sixteen months, day to day, we have to be able to have that. Because what from what I'm listening, from our plant manager, you you know, when they, when they get hit, it's a big deal. So. Communication is so key and I and it sounds like there's been more open communication here in the last few.
Last week, there's been about.
Okay.
Since we had our last.
Right, so I feel like we're all working towards a solution. City's working for towards a solution our end. You guys are working hopefully for towards a solution on your end. Your solution is gonna come a lot quicker. The city of Norfolk's solution is because we we can't operate, obviously, with the EPA guidelines we're under. Things just don't, and permitting the city can get is not in the same timeframe you guys can operate under, so. Um, I'm assuming that that sixteen month period is you guys are thinking about putting a whole full blown facility, treating on your own and then won't be treating.
Provided, we're doing a power study, provided we can pull enough power over there and.
Pulling the power to do this, okay.
If you don't have enough power, it's gonna take what, I think, two years to put a new substation across the railroad.
Right.
How much power do you need for that?
How much what?
How much power do you need for that?
Probably a thousand amps.
I'd have to convert it. We look, talk mostly in amps.
So what, so you guys said this is this is just not good. And I, so I'm gonna come at this as as an art of compromise. This is not sustainable, what's proposed. So what is what is your sustainability to to work together?
What would be sustainable would be to stick with our existing permit. The existing permit suggests that the slug load is eight and a half percent of the daily maximum. Which is ten thousand pounds as our per our current permit. And it says that our daily. So that's your daily max. You can go up to ten thousand. The slug load would be eight and a half percent higher than that. Your daily average throughout the month has to be eight thousand. That would be what our existing permit is. So your goal is to hit eight thousand every day. But we are allowed to go up to ten thousand, up to ten thousand eight hundred fifty would be, over that would be considered a slug load. As long as your average throughout that month ends up being below eight thousand. So you can have days where you exceed eight thousand, as long as on average, you end up below that. That's what our existing permit lays out, and I think we have the ability to meet that. But to. Then cut that back even further, what's being proposed is that anytime we exceed eight thousand, we're gonna pay twenty thousand. Which the existing permit says we can go over eight thousand as long as on average we're under it throughout the month. So it just seems excessively restrictive when, as we've just said, we're have clearly invested a lot and are working towards a solution. We don't want. To be a bad neighbor and anytime there's high loading, that means we're losing money. That means we're losing product. We we don't wanna put product down the. Drain. That's like farmers cutting their corn and throwing it in the ditch or the grocery store throwing out their food. We don't wanna do that either, so. It's not something we we want to happen, but what's being proposed seems. Yeah, compromise would be to just stick with our permit.
If you guys, if you guys would like to have a higher um fine for a slug. I'd be okay with that, but. Just don't.
It should be stuck at our existing levels, yeah.
Cause I can't control it.
It's gonna come out to a point where my bill is already hundred and sixty five thousand dollars every month. It's gonna, it's gonna drive it to a point where we're not. Gonna be able to function operationally.
But doesn't that, doesn't that make, that doesn't make sense. If you if you stop and think about, we're already at a hundred and sixty five thousand. At a thousand dollars.
No, that's not the fine.
That's no, that's not the fine. That's just the total bill.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, okay. Doesn't make any difference to me that the 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 numbers are, and we can look at these numbers, we can dissect them a thousand different ways. But, I mean, so what if I, so if we said like, okay, if you're over your eight thousand, now we're gonna retro you back to twenty thousand dollars for every day that you were over eight thousand. Because you didn't make your monthly load. And so now all of a sudden, you thought you were gonna, oh, I'm just, no, no, I'm I'm asking, I'm asking the questions right now. So I I'm I'm can, my concern is, number one, first and foremost, is. The smell will be dealt with over time. I get that, okay? But I am concerned that I have, that that we as a city have. Employees sitting in a wastewater plant that are doing somersaults because you guys can't give us stop stop and. Be before your load reaches us, we can't even get a phone call saying, hey, guess what? We just sent you ten thousand.
We have, we haven't had slug discharges. Correct me if I'm wrong. Everything that's been going on has been, you're talking ninety two hundred, ninety three hundred. And you don't know that until you do the full calculation of the overall flow load of the day. So it's not exactly as easy as you, as you might think about it. We didn't really slug, what we said, we sent thirty thousand to the city in one hour. Well, we just had straight cream or straight milk. It's not, it it's nothing like that.
So you guys have no idea what's happening until after it's happened three hours later?
So the way, the way the DAF runs, we test it every two hours and we get the BOD off it. But if I only discharge four hundred thousand, the BOD lo- loading. Might be inspect.
It's all in concentration levels, so depending on your discharge. But we do have, you do have ongoing monitoring of where you're at. It doesn't help when, if we, for example, think our concentration is at, you know.
Twenty two hundred.
Well, yeah, whatever, you know, say we think it's a hundred milligrams per liter of BOD. Then we're gonna base it off of that concentration. We can can calculate that to be pounds per gallon, and that'll tell us how many gallons we can discharge. Well, if we think we're at a hundred and that's what we discharge, and we send it to a third party lab and that corresponds with what we calculated. But then the city sample had us at two hundred milligrams per liter, then that's gonna put us over our level. But based off of what we measured and what a third party measured, it's not over.
So even by your numbers though, you said a thousand. So the day that we had fifteen thousand, you guys had fourteen thousand.
Oh, I'd have to look at the exact number. I said on average, I said on average.
I get, I get that. I'm just saying, so so if that's what you're saying is on average, even if, and I'm not saying we're wrong, you guys are right either way. No, we're not, that's we're not accusing anybody of anything. But even if that's the case, then, I mean, that's, that's almost, you know, that's, what, that's a eighty percent? Over your, what, your your permit? I mean, at what point do we say that? Fourteen thousand over eight thousand?
Yeah, so let me, let me step in here and and try and try and find a path, try and find a path and and I'll explain a couple of numbers. So with regard to testing, just a couple of things there. We're we're in accredited lab. Our our samples are controlled. From the time we test them to how we how we handle them, how we treat them, how we store them, how we ship them. There's um, there's, there's a lot of control that goes into that. When we split those samples, about two weeks ago, we started splitting and sampling. We're, we have their staff testing in our office. We have staff going over there to test. We're we're gonna find, we're gonna figure out why there's difference. And there's reasons for those differences. Some of it is the the filters you're using, the materials, the testing process. I, what I wanna say is, generally, we should be within five percent of each other. We're never gonna be right down to the pound or two pounds, but on eight thousand pounds loading, we should be somewhere between, we should be up five percent. Um, if we say eighty, you know, eight thousand, they might be eighty four hundred or seventy six hundred or vice versa. So five percent and and when we look at. When we look at this, I think potentially here, um, there could be an amendment or or an edit to this. Where we say if they're over by more than five percent or over by more than ten percent, whatever that daily load is. Um, I think there's probably a reasonable compromise there to to add some percentage of overage. To allow for those differences in testing. Ultimately, we rely on our lab. Again, we're certified lab. We are the, we are the lab for uh multiple communities in the area. Um, we we are extremely confident in our numbers and our process and our our quality control. Um, and we're working with them to get to the bottom of of why we're different.
Steve, can you help me with the, you know, with with our testing? Just so like, cause I, you know, you're visualizing everything coming into the plan. Are you testing on a line that's?
We test, yeah, we test all the industries.
I mean, not just all the industry, but how do you know exactly what's all coming?
We pull from the industry. We have a sampler.
Samples directly from our side.
Yeah, we have a sampler, a system that's set up on on each industry. It pulls a sample based on flow that's that's moving through.
So how fast do those readings come in?
We go, they're pulling the sample.
Right, right.
At the end of the day, we go get the 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 aggregate sample.
So my my question is, and maybe this is communication. So if we're getting, if we're reading here, are we sharing those numbers? Directly with them once we get those readings?
Yes.
So they know what we're reading in that that timeframe?
But that's fast.
It takes, it takes.
It's retroactive, so.
I get it, but then you, but if it's retroactive, like how far? One day, two days, three, one day?
About, yeah.
So then you would know, but.
The last, yeah, the previous days.
And we usually put that, we have a spreadsheet that we put.
Yeah.
Your guys' ours and then a third party lab.
I've seen the spreadsheet.
And so I'm I'm real confident that we'll, working with 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 their team and our, between their team and our team, you know, we've got a process in place. We're gonna figure out. Where the difference is, why there's differences. Is it, is it based on lab? Is it based on materials in the labs? Is it based on material handling? So we're working through that.
My goal is to be so far away that we won't have that problem.
Right. I I do think, you know, because there is a potential for difference there. Um, you know, I I think having, and and that's a little bit about the way we function in practice. As we recognize that, and so we allow some flow before we before we levy up that permit or that penalty fee. The other thing I wanna talk about though is in terms of the communication piece, it's not so much the day to day flow. It's the anomalies. It's when your DAF system breaks down. It's when the, it's when the plant shuts down for any reason automatically. You get a power blip that forces the plant to dump, we are not contacted on that. If it's a water blip, anything that blips at that plant that requires, and you know you're gonna have to pull a trigger and dump. Even if it's going, even if you think you're gonna capture it in a calamity tank, that calamity tank or that that equalization tank, that still has to get dumped. Eventually, that load is still getting to us. You're hauling some off. There's, there's a struggle there. And so some of that stuff. You're trying to figure out how, you know, you pull back, maybe you're operating at six thousand pounds that day so you can push some of that high strength waste waste out to us. Those things need to be communicated so that we know what you're doing. What are you doing over there so that we can work with you? And adjust our treatment system to handle that load. And those are the things. It's not so much the day to day when things are running generally well. Loads up from eight thousand to nine thousand or eight thousand to ten thousand. We can deal with that. It's the anomalies that occur in there that push, all of a sudden we're pushing eleven five or all of a sudden we're down. And it's, it goes equally the other way. When they're running. And it's, it goes equally the other way. When they're running, when you're running at eight, nine thousand pounds, and you shut a system down and your flow drops and your load drops down to two thousand pounds, all of a sudden, we're, we're got things going full blast at the plant. We're, we're pumping air. We got energy flowing in there. And then we hit this huge load reduction. We still have to deal with that. It'd be nice to know that ahead of that, that there's going to be a, a load reduction coming. Um, because again, that, that, we have to adjust ourselves and we have to adjust our, 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 our bug consumption rate per se. So, you know, that's just, and it's the anomalies. It's, it's when there's an issue with the plant.
Okay, so just getting back to, we're going to keep going. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Steve, but.
No, go ahead.
We're talking sixteen months. That's, that's, that's your goal, to have something in place to either handle this. The city's obviously working on our end. We can't work within that timeframe. There's just no way. So what?
If you guys want.
I'd like to like try to figure out this permit.
If we want to go from twenty thousand to five thousand, I mean, there needs to be.
But we need to work within our, we need to work within.
We just need to work within the permit that we've agreed.
Can I have a suggestion? Yeah.
Well, I just, we need, we have sixteen months to keep our staff.
Right.
Functioning properly and our plant functioning properly. That's, that's basically what we're here tonight. So.
So first, first.
That's what I'm looking at here.
If I could propose, if we can stay anywhere between nine and eight, I really need to do that up on nine to run the whole entire plant. That's where I make revenue. That's why I'm able to generate the money to be able to invest into building this wastewater plant. That's going to cost me another five and a half million dollars. I really need that, number one.
And the permit as it is, whether it's this permit passed tonight with some language changes, we have, you know, the ability is in here for me to adjust you from eight to nine. That, that's not changing and that still exists.
That's as much as I need just to keep. Because the problem is, I generate a lot of clean water, but the amount of water that goes out, when you take the, my BOD has to be about two thousand nine hundred to be able to get with the fifty-five hundred, five hundred and fifty thousand per day. When you do the calculations, I gotta be right around there. Otherwise, I can't even discharge the clean water that I have. And then I'm just stuck with all that and I can't process. So I need to be around in, anywhere between eight and nine. And I'm okay with setting the slug load and putting a harsh penalty on that one. If I do it, I deserve it. But don't penal me day to day.
But I think the slug load needs to be based off of our daily maximum. If the permit says our daily maximum is ten thousand, then it doesn't make sense to then put our slug load at eight thousand when our permit says it's ten thousand, eight and a half percent of ten thousand.
But.
You can do a daily max. Your average needs to be eight thousand. It doesn't make sense to penalize when you're saying our daily max is bigger than that. It's basically, that means our daily max is eight thousand, I guess.
So you want your cake and eat it too? That's, that's what I'm hearing. Is, we, we want nine thousand, and we, but, but.
Well, we can compromise.
See, that's, that's not a compromise. That's not a compromise on your guys' part. If we give you nine thousand, now all we can't have, well.
So what, what would you propose to be the max?
I think to say something right now would be premature. I think for, for us to compromise in a public setting, I think is a premature, is a premature spot.
Sit down and figure that piece out.
And I think sit down sooner than later.
Yeah. Tomorrow available.
I mean, you guys are up here.
You, you guys are more than welcome to come tour the, tour the plant tomorrow.
We're, we're getting into a conversation that's, I'll be honest, is way below my, or way above my pay grade.
Right. And I'm, I'm assuming most everybody up here would agree. So we're talking about loads, we're talking about BODs, we're talking about. We've been having some reasonable conversation. I think we've been making some reasonable progress. Um, you know, those loads in early Jan, or early July, right after, we, we didn't, they didn't even have nine thousand pound permit yet. We had notified them we were going to move them to nine thousand pounds from eight thousand pounds. And then everything just kind of broke loose for the next ten, eleven days. Um, since July eighteenth, the loading has been generally under nine thousand pounds. Um, and if we can, you know, if we can stay in that area, um, until we can get a more permanent solution in place, I think we're in good shape. But I do think there needs to be some review of that penalty, um, and some adjustment there. I think if, if we want to get together and, and put our heads together here and come back in two weeks with, with an amendment, I'm open to that.
I appreciate that.
Steve, just in context, on average, what's normal for a city's sewer plant to give to an industry? Is it normal to give twenty-six percent? Is that on average? Is that?
So ten per, ten percent, uh, ten percent is pretty high. Um, you know, ten percent of our plant is somewhere around four thousand pounds. We're not exactly sure right now. There were, there's some conversation there as to whether we're a thirty thousand pound plant or a forty thousand pound plant. Um, but ten percent is, is pretty high unless your plant has worked with those industries, um, to, you know, put pretreatment in place, um, either at the industry side or at the city side. Once you exceed five million gallons a day at your plant, if that's your daily average, um, the EPA steps in and says five percent's about a maximum that you should provide to any single industry. Anything above that should be pretreated by the industry.
I would have to say, one thing, one, one thing I heard from one, uh, when we were in the discussion about our plant, is we're a town of twenty-four thousand. Our plant operates at a capacity of about a hundred and four thousand population base. Was, I thought it was about a hundred, hundred and eight, okay. I said a hundred, I was way off. But I just, I heard the portion of that, that was, to me, that was, says a lot about the people out there working every day, you know, and what they can do and how they're operating our plant. So we got, we've got, we've got fourteen days till the next, here's the thing, let's, let's keep, let's, let's plug forward here. Let's plug forward with this discussion. We've got fourteen days till the next meeting. Fourteen days. We're obviously, again, we're, we're talking up here way above our pay grade, um, in how we negotiate this contract. I mean, we, or not even negotiation, but how this is going to all work out. Need Rob, Steve, and your, your team and our team to get together and come up with a comprehensive decision and a permit and a fine that's not only going to be realistic for you, but also it needs to be, there's, there's got to be some sting to it. Otherwise, what gives you the, you know, and I, I saw your facility. You guys are perfectly capable of operating. I mean, it's, it's amazing. It's, it's quite, it's, it's a, I mean.
We're a lot of time into it.
And you can see, I mean, there's, there's a lot going on out there. And I appreciate the comments, Mayor. Um, we are bringing in, between Actis Nutrition and us and the state dairy, um, uh, I don't know what you call him, but the day, the state dairy office. We all, we have agreed to bring in a third-party. Um, they are going to be engaged with us here come Thursday in a, in a conversation with Zorn and his team and me and my team. Um, and so we're, we're looking forward to having that third-party here. This is a niche that they work in. Uh, they, they're working in multiple communities where they have industry, uh, they have loading issues, and they're helping solve those issues.
Will that third-party discussion be available for the council?
Uh, we can certainly make it available to council.
Well, I think they're going to have to see it to make a decision on how they want to set this permit. So, obviously. So, and everybody's open to that. You guys are a third-party, you're open to third-party. Rob?
That's why we brought it up forward is so we can come up.
You're cool with all that? Okay. But then if everybody's open to this and open up to a compromise, why don't we, I, I would like to see the resolution in fourteen days.
Uh, Zorn, we had a meeting, what, uh, last winter, at, there at, uh, Milk. We left there, you're putting a DAF system in that was going to solve our problems.
Majority of the problem.
But we left that meeting feeling like that DAF is going to resolve the problems. And now we're today, you know, almost a year later, and we're still dealing with problems. So all, as I'm saying, all the meetings, everything we're doing, we have to land somewhere that has results for both of us.
Yep. And one thing I would comment on, so to, to Steve's earlier point, the two hundred and eighty-four violations, which that's based off of city data. But, um, I think two-thirds of that was from TSS, is, is what Steve stated, which the DAF has knocked that down exponentially. Um, I don't know that there's been more than a dozen violations of TSS, maybe less than that. That's only been in place since the very end of May. Um, and so that has drastically changed what the flow looks like, what the characteristics are. The BOD, and I'm not going to get deep into the chemistry of wastewater, but that is a different, um, it's different to treat. The DAF helps with it, but you have soluble and insoluble BOD. And anything that's soluble is not removed by the DAF because that's just precipitating out solids. And so it's greatly reduced. The TSS, which was, I think, prior to, this is before my time with the company, that was one of the major issues. And it's pretty much turned that to zero. Um, but there's still BOD which needs to be treated. And that's what we're looking into right now pending power, uh, capacity at our plant.
So Zorn, when you walked up, you said before you got here, it was a lot worse.
Yeah, fifteen, twenty-five, thirty thousand days.
Yeah, more than that. I think there's days.
So is that, Rob, is that, have you seen, have you seen some improved?
Yeah, those were the, those were the instances that resulted in, in them being shut down back in late March, late March twenty-four.
Figure this out. But unfortunately, I wasn't here from the startup of the project and we're all behind, but I want to fix it. I just, I just got to be able to run the business and do the same thing, I'd say.
I think in the past, it was common for loading to be over twenty to thirty thousand pounds pretty consistently. So it's been more than reduced by a hundred percent. I mean, it's been halved. It's, it's drastically changed and improved even just since I've joined the team, which it's been under eight months that I've been with the company. Um, and we've done a lot of investment in changing. That's been some of the specific projects that I've been working on. So, I mean, if you go back even a year ago, the plant didn't have the equalization tank. We didn't have a DAF. There was really no pretreatment. Everything that left the plant went straight to the city. And that's where you'd have loading of twenty to thirty thousand. And that's.
Were you testing then too, or no?
I wasn't there. I, I guess.
I have no idea how you guys did it.
So the, the city was just doing all the.
If this is killing you, I have no idea how you did it back then. Because that stuff went straight down the drain.
Yeah.
And right now, I'm reducing it by over half. And we're still, you know, it's something changed enormously. And that's past, obviously, we can't change that. But I'll, you know, we want to figure out what we got to do to treat it, to remove the smell and not have these problems. And the testing won't even be the problem there because we won't talk about it because we'll be so far away from being over there, it won't be a problem. But it's just, it takes time to get everything in place and you've got to be able still to run the business, obviously.
Well, Corey, you were about to say something. I think these guys have, have came up here, said what they needed to say. Um, I, I think we need to find time to give a resolution in fourteen days. Um, I think the conversation needs to continue, but maybe not in this setting.
Well, I just want to say too, as a, as a representative of, of Ward Ford and Sue, I mean Sue, I get calls daily about the smell. And it's not just Omaha Avenue. It's south, southeast Norfolk out of town. And I'll get a call tomorrow morning too about this conversation. So just a few things, there's going to be plant expansion, great, correct?
No.
Increased wastewater. Right, right, right. Treatment also, increased treatment, I should say. And then better communication when equipment fails or there's a, something that happens, it's going to be increased loads. Some of those things, I can tell the citizens that, that's, these are, these are happening to ease their, you know, their tensions. But ultimately, it's kind of on you guys to do those, make those changes.
High side's twenty-twenty. What we should have done is we should have left the site completely free. We should still float a hundred percent to you guys. We shouldn't have invested into a city wastewater treatment and treated it up there. So we don't have a big giant wastewater tank in the middle of the city. That would have been the right thing to do from a.
You still can.
But I have to agree with Andrew. I mean, the.
We talked about that as well.
The, our, our ward, where we are, we represent those people. And they're the ones with concerns and complaints. And we have no answers for them. Because you guys aren't doing what you agreed to do initially. And so I, I, you know, I, I'm, I'm sorry if you're going to get a heavy fine. Whatever this agreement comes to in fourteen days, uh, I'm for the city plant that we have and the citizens. So that's all I have to say.
But you also got to stand as you for, for the citizens. This plant does a lot for it.
I'm not saying, doesn't.
You spend over three million dollars in the community. Same people that you represent.
At the cost of our city staff, they're, they're working their butts off. And.
I'm not disagreeing.
You're not disagreeing that, but you're not helping them. Because communication would have been a big step towards that. And you had the opportunity and you have not taken it.
Thanks, Sue. I think, I think the communication will help a lot. Getting, moving forward.
Talking about communication, have you decided, have you dedicated somebody to contact, Rob? You've got somebody in place?
Yeah, and.
That's you, that's Mike, who is going to, okay.
And starting immediately, correct?
It's been since about a week ago, yes.
Zorn, what's your name?
Desmond.
Desmond, the city of Norfolk and the citizens that live here are really good people. You don't have to hold information or, or not feel safe giving them information. They will partner with you. They will work with you. They'll bend over backwards.
Yeah, Desmond's.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a citizen. I live here.
Yeah, so, um, I'm just saying, uh, work with them, talk with them, share information, and we'll get to where we need to be.
Yeah, I appreciate you guys coming up here and answering all those questions.
If any of you are interested to tour the wastewater treatment plant, please let me know.
Rob, Rob, are, are you okay, are, are you okay with, uh, two weeks?
I'm good with it.
Okay. All right.
Well, Rob will be directly involved in the discussion moving forward, so.
As long as you and your plan are okay with it, Rob, then.
I would say the protein shakes are working good at the, what you guys sell there, so.
And Jeff, by the way, he hasn't eaten a cake in a century. He won't even look at it, believe me.
So I'll make a motion to table this till the next city council meeting.
Second.
All right, please vote. All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Are we? Okay. May have a motion to go into closed session for the protection of public interest to hold a strategy session with respect to collective bargaining.
So moved.
Second.
Please vote.
All council members present voting, oops, all council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
The motion carried. Again, closed session is for a sole purpose of holding a strategic, strategy, strategy session with respect to collective bargaining. All right, we're all back. The only item discussed during the closed session was a strategy session with respect to collective bargaining. May have a motion to come onto the closed session.
Second.
Okay, motion second, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Re-adjourn.